Okay. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll do roll call. Jessica Crosby here. Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corby, not here. Bruce Rablind.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Scottstead Beach here. Joanne Smith.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Mitch Erickson.
Here.
Okay, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And now, we will start with Dale Johnson for the oath of office. Dale, it's an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you receive a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district. Did it stop?
It's ready.
Oh. With the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature, this power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Now, this... So, you're right here.
So, I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District number 361 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, Bill.
Okay. And now, we will move on to the agenda. And, let's see. I would first like to thank everybody for getting their questions in early so that the answers could be attained early, so we could conduct a good board meeting. And, so the next thing is, I would like to ask for approval of the agenda as presented. Could I have a motion?
A motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Tina, I can just make a couple comments. Just so everyone's aware from what went out, we pulled item 1C under action. It's a higher order appointment of volunteer coach. There was a conflict of interest with Rox. You'll see she has to abstain from that. So, I'm just pointing out, it was in the consent agenda. And again, we missed a relation. So, anyway, that was pulled, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now have public open forum. Do we have people?
Yep, there's someone on from Cornerstone.
Lucas, I will let him introduce himself from Cornerstone.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, as Kevin mentioned. Okay, I can speak loud, too, if that's all right. I'm a teacher. Yeah, my name is Lucas Gwinz. I'm a teacher at Cornerstone Christian in Emo. And just come to show face and say thank you for this past year. We entered in a sports co-op with you guys. And it's just been a really positive experience. One mom says that it allowed her daughter just to break out of her shell and meet new friends. And just speaking from experience, playing sports, and being a student once, too. I know that that's what sports is about, being part of something greater than yourself, fostering camaraderie and making those friendships. So, yeah, I just come from a position of gratitude. Thank you for allowing us in that last year, and I look forward to this year as well. Jason McQuaker was unable to make it tonight, but he had just passed on a letter that I would like to read on his behalf. And he is our chairman from our school. So, it reads as follows. "To whom it may concern, this letter is to shed some light on both the process in which a family joins Cornerstone Christian School, as well to hopefully get some clarity on the decision to not have hockey available as part of the sports co-op program. First off, I want to thank as chairman and on behalf of our board, everyone involved on the International Falls side for including us in the sports co-op. Although sports has always been a part of our school spirit, being able to join High Falls in the capacity we did last year really made it feel more official. So, for that, we are greatly thankful. At Cornerstone, we are a fully privately funded tuition-based school. Hundred percent of our budget is either covered through tuition or fundraising efforts. We receive no public or government funding. This means that typical families making a huge sacrifice to be a part of our school. On top of that, we have a statement of faith that all new families agree to before enrollment happens. And when I, Jason, learned of the decision by the High Falls Board to not extend hockey to the co-op with Cornerstone, I will admit I was a bit puzzled. I appreciate some of the possible reasons that may have been considered when coming to that conclusion, but I'm hoping that by shedding some light on our enrollment and tuition terms, that the decision may be reconsidered. Again, I cannot express how appreciative we are for our newfound relationship, and I hope that we can only strengthen it in the years to come. And sincerely, Jason McQuaker." So, yeah, upon hearing the news, I just want to say I respect your decision. I respect all of your decisions. We come from a position of gratitude and are just thankful for any sports. Like I said, track and field was great for our kids. I just want to give you a peace of mind that should you reconsider that, yeah, those factors involved would not make our school kind of a funnel for kids to just play hockey. There are factors at play. So, that's why I'm here tonight, just to say thanks. And if you have any questions, I'm open to them now or later, whenever it works.
And I did inform, we typically don't. I mean, it's not that you couldn't ask a question, but don't expect, you know, in open forum. So, I just throw that out. If someone asks something, if not, I mean, you're...
I don't have a question. I'll just add that Lucas reached out to me and had a fantastic conversation with Lucas. And he might be a great deal on what Cornerstone's all about and their character. I will say it sounds to be very impeccable, I think. So, I would encourage anybody on the board, if you have personal questions, concerns, whatever, what have you, please reach out to Lucas, and I think you'd enjoy a conversation with him.
Yeah, I'm just going to second that. I'm Tina, by the way, so I've talked to you frequently. I talk to him before even making a decision. As you guys know, I send emails, trying to convince some people. And then I, because of circumstances, I change my mind at the last minute. But like I told Lucas, him coming here shows how much support they are of it. And I think they have one or two kids that are interested in hockey. So, to me, I would completely reconsider my decision.
And just so the board's aware, we did not put hockey back on. There is a new football one that came forth, and it's not on to throw at anyone's face. It's, do we want to support or not? And again, you have that right. If the board so desires to look at hockey again, you're going to have to let us know. And otherwise, I don't see... And I'm just being honest, I told him, I'm going to bring it back this year, a year from now, maybe. But again, the board has that right if at any time they want to look at something again. So, I'm just saying that that's why hockey's not on. I'm not coming, you know, unless people have a reason that they want to bring it back right now. It's not other sports or activities that come up, we will continue to bring up. You know, each one is done separately.
I think, too, it might have helped people if this conversation had taken place prior and that we had, people had seen the numbers. You know, it's one or two kids. It's not 20 kids coming over, too. That might have helped as well.
And I, if I may, I don't want to be pushy with that because I really appreciate our relationship that we've had. And, yeah, I want to keep that going. And Bruce mentioned character. I just hope, like, that will be on play. I love that the coach is Ms. Erickson. She gives me updates with, you know, she asks, how are the kids doing with their grades? Like, we have an academic policy, too. But on our end, we want character to be displayed. Like, they need to represent the Cornerstone Knights while they wear that Bronco jersey. So, should you reconsider, I would want to know, hey, where is their character at with this? Because we want them to be good representatives in all sports. So, yeah, again, I just, I don't want to take too much of your time. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucas.
All right. Now, I would now like to ask for approval of the consent agenda as presented. Could I get a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Tina seconded. All those in...
I can just make a couple comments, please. A couple things, just so everyone's aware. Number four, that's high school handbook. You should note, I just want to, weighted grades are out there.
Yeah.
And of course, there's actual policy later on that also has to be abolished. I'm going to speak on behalf of industry, or some, we couldn't come up with something, you know, to accommodate, and that's why it's going away.
Good.
Being upfront, so I want to point that out. Number 38, just so the board's aware, the Safe Learning Plan. For the most part, we're done with COVID, so to speak. I mean, there are tests, we still have tests, but part of the federal HESR money, twice a year, we have to update that still, and that money's gone. So, I mean, there hasn't been a lot of time and effort. There were things updated in it. We had, is still on. I talked to Dr. Day about having tests available. You know, there's still stuff, but I just wanted you aware of why that is. There's a couple new things there. Number 39, Mr. Ringhopper and myself are recommending for junior high event workers, moving clock workers, if we put a small payment in there. It's roughly, well, it is 30 bucks an event. There were some things where certain groups were given different things through rec. It's about a thousand bucks, not a huge cost. We're recommending that. And so, I'm just throwing it out there. And then, the last thing is on number 42. Again, it goes back to some of this new rec stuff. That in the past, rec was able to have background checks. And I'm not going to call them, that's how they ran a background check, was by giving law enforcement a name. And they, we can't do that. So, we have a legal process where a company runs, does a background check. And so, our recommendation is anyone that is not paid, I mean, is truly a volunteer, so like elementary coaches that don't get paid, we will pay that $21 per go. If you're paid, meaning, I'm going to say, you know, high school basketball, you got to pay that.
Okay.
So, that's what that is, very minimal amount in the big picture. I just, like I say, I wanted...
Makes sense.
And the same employees, they pay their own, you know, and I thought the coaches are employees, but it's ones that are truly paid, you know, so.
Yep. Okay.
Unless... The only other thing I was going to throw out, and again, I do appreciate, and again, do my best to get, I answered some questions.
Yeah.
If there are further questions, I mean, we'll answer. But for the most part, I don't know if you had a chance to look at. If anything isn't clear, we still answer. But like I said, I just worry if we don't support the consent. Tend to forget a problem because our bills are pretty...
Right.
And thank you for sending that out, that helps.
Yeah, thank you. And so, quick, again, if I hadn't been at a hockey tournament all weekend, I'd have gotten it to you Saturday morning.
No, but what I was going to say is, I expect Monday morning, you know, for the most part, because I probably wouldn't have seen it, maybe I would have. But the point being, when it doesn't go until Friday, the odds are, you're not going to see it until Friday, Saturday, whatever. It's just the fact, and there wasn't much on here. The, you know, could have answered a good chunk of them. Went to have answered the 14 copiers. There's, you know, some of those, there were 14 items on there, but like a $10 ink fee or something like that, which we have service agreements. There's eight, what we call copiers. There's five big coppers. Then there's some printer copiers that the business office has. So, and to be honest, and we have some lease agreements even on big printers with, you know, others than these. A lot of them we own and we maintain, I think. But there's some that they feel it's a better deal to have that service agreement.
Right.
So, I appreciate it.
And the only reason, I'm not trying to nitpick on the consent agenda. I'm just asking because, you know, we're being told we're going to be in a deficit situation, so I feel like it's our responsibility. I mean, we're fiduciaries for the school district, so we need to look at all these line items and see where we can save some money, so.
Right, always. That's our job, so. Okay. Now, wait a minute. Where are we at? Here?
So, there's motion and a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now, we are at... The action items.
No, wait, we have...
Number four.
We have a discussion, some discussion items. We added this because the community task force headed by Nexus has a presentation.
Excellent.
And just in case the board wanted, typically, we don't discuss back and forth as much under open forum, so we added a discussion item. I put a couple other things on here, so I'm going to give it to Rob.
So, we're on number four right now.
Mm-hmm. Three, well, one, actually, under discussion.
Right after 42 on the... He sent those to here.
Okay, so on number one, out of the discussion. Okay, yeah. Okay, sorry. Take it away.
Woo-hoo. Well, good evening, board. Again, my name's Rob, and I work with Nexus Solutions. And several months ago, you know, we talked about the importance, and have over the last year, year and a half that we've been working together, the importance of community engagement and their involvement in this process. Been talking about long time facility planning. Several months ago, we started a facility task force. And tonight is the culmination of that effort, and we have three representatives. We have three representatives from that task force. We're going to talk about their experience and the recommendation that the task force has put forth. So, with that, with that...
Yeah, I think if you're just a little ways away from that mic.
If I turn, those will... Just start wrapping.
Yeah. I am Carla Lyne. I am a mom of five, teacher in the district, with service director, MHS advisory coach. I'm here because I feel it is in the best interest of my students to see things change and to help build a better future and give amazing access in safe learning spaces. We... Do you want to go?
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of want to.
I'm Mitchell. I'm Mitchell. I'm Mitchell.
Come right here.
Hello.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Mitchell Erickson. I'm very involved in our school and community, enrolled at Falls High School. I participate in a lot of extracurricular activities as well, in kind of all the fields, I touch a wall. So, fine arts, band, choir, speech, one act. And then I'm in the athletics department. I head to golf and cross country. And then also in, excuse me, the current enrollment classes. I'll be taking those this fall and spring. And, yeah, I'm also the president of Student Council and the Minnesota Honor Society, and your student representative, and glad to be here and represent the students in kind of all the fields if I can. And, thank you.
Heart of a follower. So, I'm Brian Rosi. I'm the chief operating officer at Ranelyc Medical Center. I am a new member of this community. Been here about a year now, my wife and I. I've worked for the hospital for about eight years. And when I was asked to be on this task force, I really thought it was important to participate, being new to the community, but also being a part of the hospital. Because I feel for any community to be healthy and healthy into the future, you have to have access to good education. You have to have access to good healthcare. So, when I was asked to be on this task force, I decided it was a great opportunity to get more involved in the community and see what we can do to make sure that going forward, this community does have access to both of those very important pillars of education and healthcare.
We are three community members that make up a part of this task force. Our task force was made up of an impressive group with a longstanding commitment to the children and families of ISD 361. This task force was responsible for finding what our schools need and how to achieve that. We believe that the time is now to move forward with building a better future for our students. Our aging school buildings and learning spaces are becoming less relevant and functional, as well as significantly limited learning opportunism across the district in different ways. And safety best practices have also changed. The way children has changed, but our buildings have not. The plans you are about to hear about address crucial building needs. You might be asking how we came to these conclusions. As I mentioned before, a task force was implemented to help with the planning and made sure that a referendum would honor the wishes of the community through the survey results. We met three times over the past few months, and here's a breakdown of what we discussed and worked on. We were charged with the task of reviewing the varying needs, providing input and confirming support in each area. We then reviewed the identified capital needs, provided input on those areas, proposed a budget, and looked at a budget and funding opportunities. I have too much on my hands. Over the course of several meetings, this task force diligently toured district facilities, studied finances and demographics, and engaged in thoughtful discussions to come to our conclusions for building a better future for our students. And here we are in August, bringing you our findings, results, and recommendations of the task force. What we would like you to know about this task force is how many different stakeholders from the community were involved in these decisions. This is our greatest strength, seeing community from all aspects come together to develop a plan for building a better future for our students, making sure they have access to amazing educational opportunities. The hardest part about this task force was making sure that everyone was informed. Based off of survey results, which Mitchell will speak about in a minute, here are the findings. The majority of our survey was comprised of 57.4% non-parents and non-staff of the International Falls community. These people have no direct connection to the school district other than their tax bill. The survey findings concluded that a smaller referendum than 15 million would be supported by our community. The red dotted line indicates the best fit for success is a referendum at 13.5 million dollars.
This slide here is basically going to show you the top four main buckets that we wanted to recommend to you, to kind of like highlight and look at. These kind of show, they do exceed 13.5 million. As Mrs. Lyne said, that was kind of the middle ground of the survey. And they do, they do exceed the 13.5 million. And in order to get that under or around that 13 million, we sent it over to Mr. Grover and his team to kind of narrow down the main points in all these four categories. And the four categories here, we felt that we needed to include all four of them as they were all very important. And even though they do exceed the 13.5 million, we really thought they all needed to be included if, in order to push for the referendum. So, I already said, try to step. So, our question was, we had three questions, referendum or no referendum. And the task force together as a whole decided to go yes for the referendum. That is what we're presenting to you, to the school board. That is our recommendation. And then the next one, should non-voter approved, no tax, we said no to that one. And we also said no to that third bullet point there. And I'll have Brian say why.
Well, on the second bullet, it's not so much a no as a desire not to muddy the water, so to speak, because there is funding that Kevin and his team are aware of when it comes to the second bucket, non-voter approved, no tax impact mechanisms are aware of that. They use it on a regular basis. And really, it's not going to help achieve what you want to achieve by going after 13 and a half million dollars in major renovations and then removing funding that they're already using for other things, for the day-to-day operations of the plant and the facility. And the last one just does not fit in with the spirit of what the task force felt from day one, when the survey went out to the community, to get input from the community, to focus on areas that, as a community, they would support and also determine what the tax, you know, what the tax impacts would be and how much stomach they have for increased tax burdens from a property tax perspective. And so, obviously, considering a mechanism for funding that's non-voter approved, but it's going to impact taxes, did not ring true to the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish.
Right. Can I ask a quick question? The second bullet, the non-voter approved, no tax impact. Rob, you had said that there was about $11 million that we could come up with that, you know, without impacting taxes? Is that where that falls in?
That's part of it. That also includes the debt that you have falling off, also called the RAP.
Yes.
So, you could go to referendum and fully leverage the no tax impact funding mechanisms you have and get to that 11 million.
So, we'd be at 23 million then?
Well...
For 24.
Because part of the 13.5, in order to get to the tax impact on the average home that you'll see here in a minute, it leverages that debt falling off, that RAP. So, it, if you will, consumes some of that 11 million dollars.
Oh, okay.
But it's, for instance, it's taken like all our LTF now. There's money that you can repair parking lots. You know, it's taken in doing some of that stuff that we could, like I say, if we're going to use that, we need a chunk of that to still maintain what we have. And thirdly, the last one, yeah, to do some of these that raise taxes after the fact. Say they support, or if we go forward and support them all, but then you increase it another 3 million, and it doesn't sit.
No, no, we totally agree.
And we just saw that second, that second bucket as basically robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Right, right. I totally agree, but it just, I was confused because of what you had told us before, so thank you.
All right. And so, basically, out of these three, it was yes, no, no, we are pushing for a referendum. So, the question on the ballot, there's going to be two questions. Now, the first question is going to be the top four buckets that you saw in the previous slides. And question two is really focusing on the ice arena locker rooms. We're planning to do an addition there, as well as the stadium, the football stadium, improving, fixing the locker rooms, improving the stadium overall. So, question two is contingent on question one. So, for example, to say if question two passes, but question one doesn't, neither question would pass.
Oh.
And basically, you need a 51% majority from the voters to pass for the question. And question two is not included in the 13 million. It would raise your taxes, the additional, your taxes would go up more than $13 a month if both of these questions were passed. So, that 13 a month on the average home is not included in question two, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Next slide. So, this slide shows the results from the survey, and you can see how we got the top four buckets. I'll explain a little bit what this slide means. There is no value above three, and there is no value below one. And above 2.34, that is a high support. We had a lot of yes for that. And below 1.67 is low support. And so, basically, you can see how we got these top four buckets. And as you can see, the top four, you have 2.18, 2.43, and so on and so forth. And so, these are all from the survey. And, yep, all right. I have to go.
All right, thank you. So, you can see the lower ranking buckets, right? And they have to do with gyms, the facilities with the hockey rink, football field and whatnot. Now, one thing to keep in mind, while they did not score as well as the buckets on the first slide that Mitch presented.
Just go, just...
Let's get that on here, do you? So, anyway, so while they don't score as high, they still have significant rankings, right? And the other thing to keep in mind on this is that, that this really represents a whole different demographic of your voting population, right? These are the moms and dads of the kids that have...
The minority.
Yeah. But it could be a crucial minority when talking, well, question one of the referendum. So, when we discussed this as a task force, we said, you know, what do we want to do here? We want to generate as much energy around this as possible. And to do that, we thought, well, we... And to do that, we thought, once again, as Mitch had outlined already, that it might be an interesting option to add that second question that'd be contingent upon the first question, to generate enough energy from the majority of the voting and pull in that demographic that has the anticipation, hope that maybe we can do something in a couple of these buckets, not everything, but something, and get, ensure that we get question one of the referendum passed with the hopes of getting to this second question.
Gotcha.
Next slide. All right, so just talking about, you know, summary of these financing options, that originally Mitch had already gone through, a lot of that. But once again, what we're looking at here is that voter-approved school bonds of thirteen and a half million, which equates about thirteen dollars to that average home price of two thirty-nine five. This is that LTFM that we were talking about, that second bucket, that doesn't have an impact on the, on the tax, for, for the taxpayers of our community. Mr. Grober and his team are well aware of it, they use it. So, we did not want to include this as part of what we're trying to accomplish here. And as we said before, we did not consider this last one, that would be, once again, the voters would not have any voice in that. That does not go along with the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here at all. So, once again, the recommended financing option is school bonds of up to thirteen and a half million dollars, which is, like I said, that thirteen, roughly thirteen dollars a month for that average home price of two thirty-nine five. And then, overall, in summary, once again, we're going, we're, we're recommending the referendum, financial support that was supported through the survey of thirteen and a half million dollars. We do feel a sense of urgency. I mean, we all know that building costs are not going down, inflation hasn't stopped. So, the longer you wait, if this referendum passes, the longer we wait to get something done, that thirteen and a half million dollars of value is going to continue to.
Right.
The value's going to shrink, you're going to need more to accomplish what you're trying to get done here. And so, once again, the areas focusing on are the, are those major aging systems within the schools, right? Student safety, academics, and a lot of the exterior maintenance or other areas of those four buckets that Kevin Grober and his team have been parsing through to see how they can stretch that thirteen and a half million dollars. So, once again, as Mitch outlined, we're recommending a referendum from the task force, but two questions, number one, focusing on those four major areas, and then contingent upon successful passing of that. The question two, which provide for some additional funding to at least start some of these projects in your athletic facilities. Okay? Any questions?
And all the funding doesn't have to come from a referendum, like I had mentioned before.
No, there's, there's other options.
Well, and I think we need to seriously consider, as a board, doing like a smaller contingent of the board and going to some of these major businesses in town to request some assistance.
And I guess our plan, just there, there's no decision tonight, just so the boards are aware, this is their recommendation, the board makes the final decision. So, our plan would be to set another working session, you know, to, number one, lay out what we feel should be covered, you know, which we've, we've done already to get as, you know, at least what we think as far as we can. I mean, the two things were, you know, the, the state infrastructure to things that run this building and the safety element, you know, over at the elementary, those are the two. But yet, we, the group felt that there needed to be a few things that actually affect the kids. You, you know, unfortunately, it's like good ruffs. You know, they don't.
They don't see it.
No one sees anything. And that's part of the second question, too, not that, you know, the locker room at the arena is meant to be football, baseball, softball, and hockey, you know, and that. The group felt was enough that even though it's not the top ranking, give it as an option, you know? And then, you know, some, some work over at the stadium, just some things that they felt had to be, you know, fixed up and done, and like I say. So, that would be where we want to go, set another meeting, do a work session, lay it out. And whether we make a decision that night, or at least in the near future, and part of it can be talked about, do you want to throw it out there? Are there any businesses that want to have the?
Well, I think that would be a good incentive for the referendum, because if the community sees that, oh, so-and-so business is putting forth a hundred thousand dollars towards the locker room, it's going to probably make people buy in a little bit more.
Yeah.
Like I said, I, I mentioned, I think it's, at least where we're at, I mean, or, or not, you know, I've never been, I don't know how, you know, again, pick whoever you want. You know, there's a lot of buildings across the state and the country that have names on it, you know? Let's just pick on Target Field, but I have no idea how Target ever got, you know, and how do you do that? But we can figure something out, I'm sure.
Big plaque right next to the locker room, right?
Thank you. Any questions for the, the group at this point?
Thank you to the three of the rest of the task force, appreciate it pretty much.
Yeah, nice job, a lot of work, thank you.
Okay. Now, are we done discussing?
So, that's the community group facility recommendation. I threw two more things on there, and, and, and again, just because they don't need action right now, but I, I kind of, I need some direction at least. Number one is graduation date. And I didn't pull somewhere, it's either in policy, it's in writing, it happens the, the Sunday following the last student contact date, okay? Next year, that's June ninth, that's barely late.
Oh, my goodness.
Correct, and it just happens that we come back for a couple of days to, I think it's June fifth, which is like a Wednesday, or Teacher Day might be, or maybe it's the fourth. But point being is Labor Day is actually like the twenty-sixth, or Memorial Day. So, we could go after the seniors are done, and I'm just throwing it out on June second would be the Sunday prior to that. Now, everyone else would come back still for two more days after that. But I'm just throwing it out there, because like I said, it, it, we already have people asking, you know, as people with seniors.
Of course.
They start, you know, finding for family. And so, like I say, I know it's in, but it's in policy or it's in writing that that's when it happens. And the board has adopted that years ago. And I explained because people had issues Thursday, and kids were in activities, now he's had to make a decision. So, I guess I'm just looking for some guidance. I mean, if we're going to change it, you know, we need to have a conversation, we can have a discussion right now. I'll find if it's actually in policy, I'll have to bring it back to you for formal approval. If it's, you know, just a consensus, you know, if it's just in writing, like I said, I saw it not long ago.
Does anyone have any feelings about that?
But, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I have a question, and this is just me outside, I've never, graduation on a Sunday.
Okay, where the story came from, again, what happened is, I think it used to be on Thursday.
Thursday.
And what happened is inevitably, there'd be a baseball game in Virginia, or a softball game, or a track running, or something. And so, kids had to choose, you know, most time it was playoff time. Are you going to play the playoff game, or are you going to graduate, walk through graduation? And so, at some point, enough people had, had to make that choice. We have Saturday stuff at that time of year, too. And so, that's where it came up, that, that let's do Sunday, no one has to make a choice. And that's where it's been, good, bad, or indifferent, can't change. The other thing is, if you're going to, I'm just going to pick on Virginia, Rock Ridge, Albo, I mean, that's where all this stuff is. So, even if they have, a lot of times, they can get back if it was a seven o'clock graduation at night. But we're two hours north or whatever, and so inevitably, someone gets stuck in a bad spot. So, like I say, I, again, we're open, you know, I can't tell you. And I don't think it's doing enough for anyone else right now necessarily what would be on the Thursday or Friday, because things change, you know, even weather-related, you know? All of a sudden, something gets pushed back, nothing gets pushed to something, and that's where that came from. The question now is, do you want to change it to that in-between week? Or do you want to leave it like it's been? Or do you want to do something totally different? You could go to a Thursday, Friday, but I'm just.
It was always Thursday at seven.
Oh, see, I was just, because, remember, it's always Friday, a lot of people, you know, Friday evening, or whatever it is.
Well, I'm not opposed to having it on the second, how many, how do people feel?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't see any problem with.
If we don't want to change it on a Sunday.
With the seniors graduating and the rest have to go in the addition of two days, I don't see a problem.
No, and I don't see a problem.
Unless you're a senior parent that has family coming up and you have to do all the things that take. You know, I mean, then you're still having to send your kid to school for the next couple of days when you've got family in or.
I see, see, I see, I'm sorry, I see that as a positive, actually.
Yeah.
Well, my concern are you setting a precedent, precedent to move it whenever, every year, and making it optional rather than confirming, so people know.
I, I like, again, I like the idea, because, you know, we can't foresee the future, and I think it's sometimes, many times, better to be flexible than to be locked in.
And we also always vote on calendars anyway with a number of things.
And, and that's really where that came from, what happened, again, the recommendation to the board, and the board supported, is they actually extended the calendar a little bit to give a few more days off. Otherwise, we would have been done with everyone before the second. But they wanted a couple, I'm going to say, longer weekends, like in February, March, April, whatever it was. So, what happened is then, to get our, our days in that we have to have, we had to go a couple of days. And again, it is what it is, some people like it, some don't. And so, typically, we've been done first day of June or end of May. And so, then, it's always worked that Sunday would be, you know, we wouldn't do it on the morning. You know, that was also a conversation, that there's just too many people traveling, and we're never done that early, then at least have them there, so.
The last day of school is the fourth or the fifth?
It's, they come back from Monday, Tuesday, and I think the teachers finish maybe Wednesday, and then bring it up.
Okay, so the fourth would be the last school, you know?
Correct, June fourth.
Make it Thursday.
How many people would be strongly opposed to having it on June second?
And again, like I say, I'll look, I think it's in policy, I just got to find it. If it is, I'll bring it back for a formal vote. If not, we're just looking for kind of a head nod, it's discussion, move forward, okay? The second thing on there, and again, don't need a, a formal decision, but typically, and we have a sheet that history uses hands out to the students, it's kind of the rules of graduation. I didn't copy it, I'm just telling you. One of the things in there, no, one of the things in there is, A, it's our graduation. A lot of people don't realize, it's the board's, school board's graduation, okay? It's a ceremony to honor the kids that you're giving the diploma to. And so, they don't have a right to wear anything that they want to. They wear up the, the logo, and they don't get to, some get cords for honors and things like that, but they don't get to decorate their hat, put whatever you want on it. You know, because there's some issues with that, people not just saying here, but other places have decorated with whatever. That being said, there was an ask, and like I said, I just throwing it out, you haven't heard this, so, is, would there be anything allowed for the, in the students that are joining their district? Could they put anything, it's not, I'm not saying wear blue and red, but could they either wear a ribbon, or, you know, have an extra tassel or something, just to acknowledge? And, and again, it's not, I don't think only the can of orange, where every kid can do whatever. There is some Ameri, Native American things that have changed that they're going to be, and again, that's being addressed in our handbook. It's just something to think about, we don't need an answer tonight.
So, I have a couple of questions, though, so is that, so we're looking at Indus, how many Indus kids do we have right now, do we know?
The last count was roughly twenty-five, twenty-six or something, mostly high school, I'm being honest. There's not as many elementary, there's some that are full-time, two, three, that are full-time PSCO. There's a chunk, and, and so, it might be a couple a year. I don't see, again, going on forever.
Right, that's.
I just see there's, you know.
I think it's honestly just like the seniors had approached and just said, being we started preschool in Indus and carry on through eleventh grade, is there something we can add as red to our, you know, attire?
Oh, okay.
Like I said, I don't see if someone came from Grand Rapids, you, you know, or all these different.
It's a different situation, yeah, because I mean, Indus, they got their school closed. If somebody moved here, that's a different deal. I don't think there's anything wrong with them wearing a little ribbon or something.
For us to come up with.
Right, I wanted to know what it would be, I mean.
Sure.
And if, if you're okay with something, we'll have some conversation and come up with something to where, like I say, I just feel, you know, I can handle a little bit of their color.
Is everyone okay with that?
I, I guess I would limit it to Indus.
I would, yeah.
Not open enough to.
Just in their situation.
Because of the situation.
It's not going to be a thirteen year deal.
No, right, it's got to be.
The next thing, a year, maybe two or something, and then.
I think it shows some respect.
It does, right.
Okay.
So, that's that item, and the third item under discussion is, I put in front of you the, sorry, I can't find my sheet, the ideas for some goals. And again, not that it has to be a hundred percent decided tonight, but as I mentioned, when we were talking about it last week, or last month, that it would be nice to get them before it gets too far down the road. And so, either as a group, we need to figure out a way to, what you want, you know, for goal areas, and I guess I'm going to say a little more direction and action, how to measure and things like that, or ask two or three to, you know, work on it and come in September. Like I said, I don't want to get to December or January, here's your goals now.
Can we, I would, I would move to have a few people take away and work, please. I, I like the idea of a lot of these, but they, goals have to be quantifiable. You have to be able to measure.
And that's why I say some action items are something that here's where you have to get it.
I think there's way too many.
Yeah, and there's too many.
But these were just the ideas that were submitted.
Yeah.
And so, I'm going to throw it at rocks, this is your deal, it's not my deal to run.
Okay, so, I'll appoint some people at, very soon, okay?
Yep.
So, we can get going on that.
I would say we need to have it decided in September.
And we, I'll appoint three people, okay? So, if you're interested, please let me know via text or whatever. And Dale, we have to all get your text number, so you're, you are no longer anonymous.
You're in the loop.
No being anonymous.
Or send an email, text or email.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I need to text, or just phone them or anyway.
Oh, I thought you had it.
I think I do, but not.
Can you get it out?
So, okay, next, now we're to the action items, okay? So, under the concept of improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported, I would like a motion to approve the MSHSL Cooperative Agreement with Cornerstone Christian School for Football effective the 2023-2024 school year. Can I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, now, is there a discussion?
Need a second.
I mean, can I have a second first?
A second?
Now, is there a discussion?
How many kids are interested?
So, if you notice on the application, and that's why, and, and someone asked, and Tim pointed out, there's an eighth grader and a ninth grader that are interested right now, now.
Two student athletes.
Two student athletes, and then unless our numbers of what, you know, we currently have, well, do they change? Definitely.
Well, and, and look, and if you do the math, it's, I think it comes to sixty-two of our FHS players. I mean, I mean, that's, I don't know, I guess I don't know the grades.
It listed them on it.
Did it say seven through twelve?
Yeah, it did, yeah.
All right, so, my question is, and I should know this number, but I don't. What's a typical, what's a good-sized number for a football team? He left, I was hoping he wouldn't leave.
And I'm going to say, their program is in support of it, you know, I don't, I can't ask.
It is, I talked to Seth.
And what I was going to say is, we've had, we've had teams come that, you look at the other side of the field, and you go, oh my word, they got an RV, but, you know, but on the flip side.
We're dressing our JV, so it looks like we have more than we have.
They did, last year, they called an eighth grader.
No, but where I was going to go is, even last year, they struggled JV numbers. And eighth grader, most likely, is not even going to make JV, ninth grader, probably. A few ninth graders might make varsity, but again, depending on size, it's a big piece. But they had to pull someone varsity to play JV to really have a team. So, the numbers are good again, according to Seth, you know, old and so on, this and that, but they can use kids. Now, could one or, could, I guess, I'm not that ninth grader, I have no idea who it is, could they be a star athlete and take someone's starting spot? They could.
I also have a question about, now, so once, if this was approved today, this was, this is only for the 2023-2024.
Co-op is a two-year agreement for the high school.
So, it's 2025.
Technically, yes.
Fully up to change.
It's effective this year, and it's, that's just the way the high school league co-ops are, you know, now. I'm going to say, we had one with Indus, in fact, Tim was asking if we truly have to dissolve it since they dissolved, or how it works, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, I think we had another year with girls hockey, they weren't technically part of it or whatever, but it's a two-year agreement after that. If you don't stop it, it will automatically be removed. So, you know, again, but again, each one's individual. And like I said, I, I'm honest, I did not put this, they asked after, and again, they weren't within thirty days. I think I've told you before, the high school league says co-op's supposed to be in place thirty days prior to the start of the season. So, we went, it can't, we can check, well, when it came eighth and ninth grade, where they truly weren't varsity, Tim's the one, I, I'm not calling, ask, and they came back to say it's really a guideline, you know? And so, it's possible, most likely, ninth grader won't play varsity, I don't know. And so, they said, go ahead and deal it out, see if it'll go, or, I mean, in high school league.
You have to think, too, that most of these kids, since they've gone to Cornerstone, they haven't played. So, chances are, they're not going to out, be out competitive compared to one of our kids, because they haven't played before, you know, unless a couple of years back, which, again, they haven't. You know, unless a couple of years back, which again, they haven't played for a few years when they were partnership at Fort Francis.
Okay, I would like to hear from Tony.
I struggle with this whole, these co-ops, just because country to country, I don't, I feel like they need to have a feeder program starting somewhere to get to these points of handing kids over in eighth and ninth grade where they have some skills. I voted no for the other ones, and I, I'll be voting no for this one as well, I'm sorry.
And I guess I can throw it out, I guess our feeling, and again, the co-op is because it's technically possibly high school league level, seven through twelve can be high school.
Yes.
You know, if you're doing, I'm just gonna pick on cross-country, this eighth and ninth grader very well could be varsity. So even though here, our feeling, and I'm just throwing it out there, if this was approved, like our elementary flight football, they would be open to participate in that as well. I mean, because I think you do have to support a feeder program, you know, um, not saying they have to, but that's kind of the way we've seen it. If the co-op was approved, I'm gonna pick on cross-country, and if they did a fifth and sixth grade something, we would let those kids. Because otherwise, yeah, I, now, the one hockey you didn't, we could say, from my standpoint, they're not part of the program. But again, we don't govern rec.
Correct.
That's the only difference there at the six, seven, eight, nine, ten-year-old levels, so. But whether it was swimming or any of the others, that's our feeling, that if you support it as a high school league level, we would support that at the.
So is it simply a trade-off of getting more kids versus one kid that might?
I think it's both, because, like, for cross-country and stuff, we need those numbers, and for track, we need those numbers from Fort Francis. And like, like my point's always been, like, how can we tell one or two kids no, when we're co-opping with, you know, all their friends for all these other sports?
In other sports.
Just because they picked a popular sport over here, you know?
I don't mind the individual ones, when it's like your personal record, stuff like that, and I don't mind it, but it's just when it's, I don't know, the bigger teams.
It is different between individual team.
Right.
What about volleyball? How did, how did?
We got one girl, that was it, one ninth grade girl.
We have one girl, and right now, uh, volleyball, don't we have a large amount?
Yes.
Of kids on volleyball.
But then again, we got one ninth grade girl that's never played before.
And that's it.
That was it, yeah.
Joanne, do you have something to say?
Um, I don't know, this, I mean, I, I hear both sides and I, I understand, I guess football co-op, I, when I was back in school, we co-opted with another program, and we were very, very small school, so having two, and these are two bigger kids that came from a different school. And yeah, they did help the football team be better, but it improved everybody's morale, because they were better. They weren't losing every single game, because they were the whole shrimps out on the field. You know, I mean, so I, I mean, but again, it's a little bit different, because we have a little bit, we have, you know, more people in our school versus what I had. But at the same time, you know, would that improve morale a little bit to have? Would this, you know, would these kids have, be a good influence as far as character and things like that on, on these students? Yeah, I mean, so it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard deal.
Dale, did you have more to contribute to the conversation on this?
Well, it just, it looks like a simple trade-off is, is either, you're, you're, um, getting more kids, having a better team potentially, versus maybe one, one kid might get sidelined as a result. I think that's a real small possibility.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, I've had, I've learned a lot more over the months about this whole co-op. And, uh, and I've visited with many people, like I just said, including Lucas, including Chad, including Tim, um, and others, other public people. And, uh, you know, it, Lucas re- reassures that they are very selective in what they agree to. Who they get, who they invite into their school, um, and they follow them very closely. And the scenarios that we talked about, of course, it always went back to the hockey situation, cause that's my biggest concern about being abused, okay? So he reassured me that that wasn't gonna happen, he was, he's aware of, he's aware of what's going on, he's aware of past. So it put a little bit different light on it. This, this particular one, football, it's two kids. And I wasn't at the board meeting when they passed the volleyball, it was one girl. So it's like, it sounds, it paints a bad picture for me.
No, but, but do keep in mind, I mean, again, there's spots for everyone. Volleyball's probably the toughest one, just to be honest, and, you know, but the kicker, someday, you know, you could get that kid that takes the starting spot from some kid. I mean, that is route, but there's places, right, like J V, you know, football, there's plenty of spots, so no kid is gonna knock play. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, I also wanna, Bruce, and how do you, and, and I do wanna hear from the rest of us too, but Bruce, how do you feel about, um, not just Bruce, but I wanna say, how does everyone feel about, we made this vote for hockey? Are we going to be able to discern the difference between the hockey and the football? If we make a decision to support the football co-op and not the hockey co-op, is this gonna become a problem that haunts us?
I'm under the understanding that we can revisit it at any time, so.
So you don't, I mean, I mean, feeling wise and everything, that it's not gonna be a problem that haunts us, from community?
Yeah, no, I don't think it will be, I mean, the push is gonna come from the hockey community.
Yeah.
Guaranteed, um, but I, I don't see that there's gonna be a big push from the other athletic events, I guess, I don't know. I don't think it's gonna be a factor.
I feel like hockey's kind of a different animal anyways, just because the, like, the lower levels, the rec hockey is not under our purview. Whereas the lower football is all school.
Well, it isn't, it isn't, if, you know, the piece, they have their own association. But where they're gonna, at least at this point, agree to play by the high school league rules, run like rec did, because otherwise, they don't get access to your facility. You know, and again, if they choose to do something different down the road, that's the only thing we have right now. But at this point, you know, they have some, you know, especially with kids, new hotels, they ran some more tournaments. They in essence kind of need Bronco for a certain part of their activity.
Of course.
So, again, right now, I'm gonna say, I think things are where they are, and hopefully, things will run, you know, having the high school league rules, which they technically did supposedly before, under the rec commission. Whether that changes down the road, I can't tell, of course, they, you know, they run concession stand, they, you know, that's a benefit to them. I don't know what they make, they pay a small fee to us, um, but again, any of that stuff can change. And again, it's not a, you know, gotcha type deal, it's just, that's, that's the business.
Well, I, I think that we wouldn't be given this much airtime if it, if we, if it hasn't been, it's being abused in the hockey situation as we speak. And it has been, and so that's where, I'm gun-chi, and I know what's there as well.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking for so much input.
Well, I think we can, I think we can decide, you know, I think we can decide individually, and I, that's, I'm looking at it individually. But yet, I'm also looking at it, you know, with the same criteria as, as the others, so it's, and I guess that's our job, that's our, that's our charge to do.
Okay, Tina, could I hear from you? Do you have any more to say?
I guess, I mean, I've reached, like I said, I reached out to every coach, every level, rec, varsity, everything, volleyball, football, hockey, everything. I reached out to parents that have kids in sports, parents that don't have, and the majority is for it. I had one coach that wasn't for it, and one parent that wasn't for it, and I talked to over twenty people. You know, and like my thought, if, I just, like I keep saying, you know, like I sent you guys emails, you know, bantering it over and over. I'm in support of it, cause how do you turn down one kid because they wanted to play a sport that's so popular over here, but approve everything else? I guess, you know, and I'm still standing by that. And like, I even told, you know, I had a conversation with Chad and Lucas again, and said, you know, I only turned my mind on the last minute for hockey, just cause all the controversy going around, and I truly felt like the rest of you did not understand the whole picture, until Lucas came tonight. Like, you know, I was trying to relay it, but I still felt like you guys didn't fully understand it. And I thought, and I just didn't feel like right voting yes for hockey, when I didn't feel like, I felt like everything was still on the table, like, I felt like you, there was too many open questions for you guys, so I just couldn't support going forward with hockey at that time. But I think, you know, my mind would, is different now that I feel like you guys have the full picture. Whether you guys vote for it or not, you know?
Right.
That's your choice.
Jessica, do you have any more to add? Is there anything we haven't discussed?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. I think, um, being a hockey parent, I mean, my daughter plays, it's a significant in, investment when you have young hockey players coming up through the rec hockey program, and to have your kid go to the high school level and potentially have somebody from a different school that doesn't even go to school here or pay taxes here, take their spot. Although, on the other hand, from a business perspective, I can also say, that's life. Like, that's gonna happen all the time, so get used to it. So I, it's kind of a double-edged sword there. I, I, I think hockey and football are completely different, I don't think you're gonna have any backlash from people if you approve the football. But I do wanna caution you guys both saying, well, there's only one for volleyball and two for, that's right today.
Right.
But in three years, there might be fifteen.
And then you vote on it again, though.
Yeah.
You're not grandfathered in for fifteen years.
Well, you can choose after two years.
After two years, but if you don't talk about it, it just automatically goes forward.
I, I think Alex, I'm pretty sure they automatically will do unless you dissolve it.
So we have to remember to put it on the agenda.
Yes.
You know, but then I just wanna call it too, because I don't know if I mentioned this, like, on the flip side, what about these kids that played J V last year and had no games because there wasn't enough kids?
I totally agree with that, yeah.
Had we pulled five kids over from, which it isn't five, but had five kids been pulled over from Fort, they would've played, there's enough kids for J V, you know, but there wasn't. So when people say that, you know, you're supporting our kids by voting no, that's not true. You're supporting the A-team player kids or the varsity player kids, not the J V kids or the B-team kids, you know? Cause they need those numbers, that's just my thoughts.
That's a good point. Anything else we didn't?
Well, on a football team, you know, say, you were, you moved from your starting position as a guard, say, there's other positions. There's twenty-two plus kickers, and, you know, there's a lot of positions. Hockey's a little bit fewer, but I don't see any difference. Say, say a kid comes over and you lose the center job, you can move to a wing or defense, right? Uh, it's unlikely that you're gonna go from the top position and not play at all. I don't care who comes in, right, whether it's hockey, football. If, if you were good enough to be there in the first place, there's room for it somewhere. I don't see there's a risk bringing other kids in, and a benefit to having more kids, which is what we need.
Any more discussion? Tony, do you wanna follow up after everybody's settled?
No, I'm, I'm, I just, I wish this was a little, like, more closer to home, where these relationships could've semi already been established. I feel like they're gonna be zooming in quick for practice, zooming back out, because they live so far away. There's not gonna be any, like.
Camaraderie.
Right, and I just, I don't know how that's gonna build anything, but.
I don't think that's true, though, just from my son's experience in track. I mean, he still talks to the kids that he did track with, you know, and now them kids are in cross-country, you know? So I guess I don't see that.
And, and I had the same experience with J V track. That the kids came over, and we had quite a few, actually.
Four or five?
Yeah, consistently, uh, and then some of the girl, on the girls' team as well, and they, uh, worked well with the other kids. Now, they only came over three days a week, but they went to all the moves.
Well, you, you should try, uh, joining a team in France and not being able to speak French, and if they all speaks French. You'd be there for a full year.
Is that what you, uh?
Yeah.
That was a good part, right?
They were making fun of you, weren't they?
I could tell you a story, but I'm not.
Okay.
They did.
Okay, I guess we're ready to move on to a motion, okay? Are you guys ready for a motion?
No.
We had a motion, we had a second, second.
A motion and a second, we're in discussion, discussion.
I'm gonna get this all straight in my mind before I say.
You just asked, it's time.
I know it, but I'm trying to see, I wanna be ready to say what I wanna say. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now we're going to move on to one B. Approve the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four Activity Student Handbook. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Tina, okay, discussion.
Okay, a couple of things, um, first of all, we, we, we chose to put this not in the consent, because there's been a, you know, a variety of conversation. And again, if, you know, there needs to be more time, we can always, you know, table and move on. There is one change that, um, a correction under trap. The criteria for lettering says twenty, twenty targets or whatever.
Twenty and a half, and they've been going nineteen, yeah.
It should be nineteen, so that was changed today, cause like I said, the version online is not changed yet, but I just wanna point that out. Other than that, um, this is the, the recommendation, you know, at this point. It has, um, some changes from where it was a year ago, and I feel bad, Tim left, um, you know, he spent some time, I've spent some time.
I was gonna say, whoever worked on it should be commended.
Well, Tim did a lot of the formatting and stuff, but I mean, there's things that were old, there's things that we still have to, he's met with coaches.
Yep.
He's had meetings, I think, I'll be honest, I, Mr. Ringoff, her hats off so far. Um, now again, there's still things that have to be upheld, you, you know, um, but I'm open to conversation.
And I think that's the biggest piece, is that we are upholding this, you know?
Following it.
Yes, that's the biggest part, like, if we're gonna have to reword it to, be a little bit easier on, you know? Like, I just, I wanna make sure that when somebody comes up and says, well, why is this happening? And then you pull up the handbook, and it's like, well, I don't know, because here's the handbook, I wanna make sure that we're following that.
Yep.
I don't disagree, and this will come in front of you every year now, you know, and should've been, it's been dropped, like I said, and there's things, anyone sitting at the table, it has been dropped. It hasn't been annually like the, the two schools, it will be brought in.
Now, we can table this if we need to, so.
You can, there's a motion at second, it just depends, it can change at any time. And, you know, like I said, it can be amended, just like your policy, your policy takes a couple of readings, it's a little different unless it's emergency. But, um, it just depends if there's major challenges, you know, if there isn't, you know? I think the appropriate time is like now at the start, or in between the seasons or something like that and stuff. You know, there's some things in there, like, you know, we clarified that there should be a, you know, a report on the season from the head coach. It's not necessarily every coach, I mean, it is a program, he's gonna do a, um, what do you wanna call it, analysis with the team, some kind of survey. Again, it's gonna reflect on the whole team, um, not just, you know, head coach or whatever. I, I sure hope there's conversations with, you know, again, the, each level of coach, but again, it's kind of a program thing. He'll give some updates, um, like I said, we think it's ready to go.
I think it looks great.
I do too.
Things like that, yeah.
You gotta start somewhere.
It'd be nice to see it updated, yeah, exactly.
It's a fluid document.
Yep, great.
Okay, so we're, okay, I'm gonna go ahead then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, okay. Now, we are under one C, um, yeah, this had to be pulled, because there's a relationship, so, with, with me. Acknowledge Ellie Jean as a volunteer for junior high football for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. I'll run this, but I can't vote, because I have to abstain. So may I have a motion?
First of all, can you explain to me how this works, as, as a volunteer, you have to prove it?
See, what happens is they're still technically an employee, and, and, you know, even though they're not paid. And so they do a background check, they're covered under our insurance, even though they're a volunteer, they're, they're working for, under the district, you know, if something happened. You see what I'm getting at, it's just like, say, say we have a chaperone for even a, a fifth, the fifth grade trip.
Okay, so you just got.
We acknowledge them as a volunteer, we would do a background check, cause they, like, say if they went to that, uh. Starbase, you know, they can be alone with kids, so we would do a background, they're considered a volunteer, and we acknowledge them, so our liability insurance, all that stuff covers them. So, um, you'll notice, and that's one of the reasons our consent agenda's getting quite a bit longer, is we have all the elementary and middle level coaches, whether they're volunteer, whether they're, they're used to be what we call rec, and a lot more. And so, you know, a lot more paperwork going on, you, you know, so, yeah, good question.
Okay, any other discussion on that? I'll move.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I abstained. Okay, under the concept of implementing data-driven teaching practices and.
No, there's no, I'm sorry, there's nothing under two, three, and four.
What?
There's, there's nothing under two, three, so.
He just wrote the.
Yep, they're just the other.
Oh, okay, I see, okay, Mitch Erickson, did you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'm, that's my mind. All right, so, I'll start with Kate, uh, they will be hosting a block party sometime. All right, so, I'll start with Kate. Uh, they will be hosting a block party sometime in September for all community and for high school kids too. I believe that's gonna be at Itasca, uh, Second Avenue East. Uh, the, the date's not set until yet as they are doing reconstruction on the road there, so once that's done, they will have a confirmed date, but it will be sometime in September.
Excuse me, Mitch, did you say Itasca or Co Task?
Co Task.
Co Task.
Co Task is what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever ones, um.
Yep.
Second Avenue East, yeah, okay.
Um, student council and MHS, uh, will be helping with meet the teacher night, that is August thirtieth. Um, they'll be around to help with tours and opening lockers for those sixth graders. And really focusing on like the middle school, maybe a couple tours of the high school. And just kinda help out and show the younger kids around. MHS, the applications were due today for the new juniors coming in, um, so I don't have any numbers yet for MHS. Student council wise, though, we had our first meeting last week on Tuesday, and it went really well. We had, uh, sixth through twelfth graders, that is something new this year, we're incorporating everyone in the high school, sixth through twelfth grade, as there's now kind of a middle school. The pep fest this year, though, will, um, for homecoming, will be sixth through twelfth grade. But the winter and spring will be separate. There will be a middle school pep fest and a senior high pep fest. But we wanted to keep homecoming together as, cause you know, homecoming is kind of like a big school event, we wanna keep everyone incorporated together for that.
Makes sense, yeah.
Um, the theme is homecoming week, we've got the beat, so we're gonna have some kinda song-based dress-up days. You'll see them come out, they'll be, it'll be fun. Monday, we actually will be changing up a little bit, there isn't going to be a bonfire to announce the homecoming royalty. It's gonna be a little bit different. We had a couple trouble last year getting in to get the fire permit from the fire department. And supervising that was kind of a little bit of a hassle, so we're gonna change it up, there's gonna be two events on Monday. So during seventh hour on Monday for ninth through twelfth graders, we're gonna have a mini pep fest. It's gonna be the end of seventh hour to introduce the royalty. And then later that evening on Monday, there'll be a movie in the park, in Smoky Bear Park. I'm, we partnered with High Falls Nice to provide a movie there, and then the park will be sixth through twelfth grade and community members. So that way we can get those younger kids involved, cause royalty's kind of only the senior high, ninth through twelfth grade. And they wanted to become a little bit more involved as well, so we thought we would do the movie night as well. So that's gonna be in the park, um, on Monday, uh, the eighteenth, homecoming's eighteenth through the twenty-second.
Okay.
All right, Wednesday's our pep fest, um, we're gonna have peach fuzz volleyball and power puff football again, those are our fun. The community is welcome to come in and spectate if they want to cheer on whatever team they want. And we'd like to remind everyone that all juniors and seniors are welcome to participate as well. And then Friday, of course, is our parade. And that's about it, that's all I have to, and we're kinda, just kinda busy with homecoming week and everything prepared for that, and, uh.
Thank you, Mitch. Any questions for Mitch? No? Okay, Missy?
Okay, um, right now we've had, I don't have like numbers for our enrollment, but we've had twenty-one withdrawals and thirty-three enrolls. So we're up twelve, I guess, right now. And then, um, our summer school program, it ran pretty smoothly, but we did, like, the attendance was a lot more sporadic this year than it was the first year, I think. And I think that comes with like not having to pay anything to do that, you really don't have any commitment in. So that just kinda, um, is hard for us when we're planning on those kids and we get supplies and, um, they don't show up, so.
Thank you.
Um, we're getting ready for workshop and open house, our open house is on Wednesday, August thirty, it's from five to seven. And our keynote speaker this year, um, coming to the high school will be Kim Bearden, and she's coming on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth. And she will do the keynote for all staff.
Missy, what are the, twenty-three withdrawals since when?
We've had twenty-one draws, uh, well, since the beginning of summer to now.
And do you know what most of them are for? What any of them are for?
Yeah, two went to Littleport and one, two, the rest moved our town.
Holy, holy.
Went home school.
And, and that was the piece, and, and I just throw it out on, on the goal thing, for the most part, the last two, three years, most of the time, we get what's happening. Now, if they're going, like, those two to Littleport, we might not have a lot of answer, but I don't know how many years ago it started where they start tracking, you know, and we put something in the system. Um, and so like I say, I just throw it out there that, um, usually the kids come to. We ask, you know, are you here? Of course, you get records and this and that, but I just throw it out there that most of the kids.
Makes you wonder if it's because of the job situation, when people move out of town, it's because of the jobs or?
That's a lot.
That is a lot.
Yeah, wow. Okay, Missy, do you have anything else?
But I take, ju- just a couple of things, you know, and I'm just gonna throw it out, taking the town thing, for instance. You know, there, there's a, you, you know, and you, you, you know, I just throw it out, there's often two, three kids depending on.
There's two, but that would be a Tim's book.
No, I just throw it out there, you know, yeah, it's, it's a fair number of families, but, you know.
Yeah, what a shame.
That fluctuation quite a bit.
Seems like a lot.
Is there anything else, Missy?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay, Tim?
Okay, where, our numbers right now on Sky were, we rolled over in July, we have some students who are popping up as active, who are not active, so we're in the process of getting those numbers right. But I have thirty-two students who have enrolled into the district since the beginning of summer. Twenty of those students are from Indus, we have seventeen leaving the district, so we're up fifteen. So, just to ask them a question, where do these kids come from? We lost four to Littleport, two, I'm leaving one of the family members who lives in Littleport, and we gained three from Littleport. So we almost broke even on that, so they kinda go back and forth. We have, the majority of the students who are leaving are moving out of the district, um. Oregon, Brainerd, Warroad, Brainerd. Um, one, for the two people going online, Shasago Lakes, so there's a lot of different people paying off. So, we're up. Um, I actually met with a student today from, who just wanna go to the alternative school, our alternative school is filled, I mean, a waiting list, so they're gonna end up going online, and, um.
So can they just make that decision? Like, they don't wanna go here, so they can just go to the other side? Okay, that's just one of them.
Well, no, as far as getting into the ALC, they need and they need some criteria to not, because otherwise.
They can't just choose for any whole reason.
Right.
There's actually criteria to deem that risk, in order to qualify for the ALC, so, but there's still students out there from the high school, not many who aren't accounted for, I guess. And so we're gonna try to help that family get their records from North Home so that they can get enrolled online. Our sixth grade numbers right now, we are at thirty-one and thirty-one, however, the one student in that thirty-one, the parents, they said they're enrolling and out of the district, they're just keeping them in until they get the official. Request for information, so we'll go to thirty and thirty-one, but then we've also heard from another family who's gonna move into town, uh, end of October, early November with a sixth grader. So we're likely gonna be at thirty-one, thirty-one if everyone who's in the system right now is here.
So two classes of thirty-one students, see?
And what happens a lot is we have students right now in grades six through twelve who are in the system with schedules, and on the first day of school, they're not gonna show up. And they'll be forty's in, and they still haven't shown up, and then we're gonna get a request for records from Warroad or Deep River or, or themselves. But right now, the number we have in sixth grade, the rest of our grades, we believe are not on any threshold where we're fully up class sizes.
What happened to our conversation where we were kind of all informally in favor of splitting the sixth grade into three sections?
We, we had the conversation during budget that it was what it was, you know, at that time if we were leaving it, and we would watch and see. I mean, it's, it's come up, I forget if it was twenty-nine and thirty at that time, or thirty and, you know, it's come up a few kids, but, um, that's where, where we're at.
I've just heard a lot of feedback from parents of that age of kids and their.
New school and everything's different.
The tough part, like I say, you know, it's the same conversation we had at that time, it's seventy thousand, you know, and, you know, and what's the, you know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, and for sixth grade, I don't know how you do it now, like, when I was in sixth grade, you just had a teacher and that was it, and it was thirty-one kids in a class or whatever, but. Is it truly thirty and thirty-one kids in a class, or do they move around?
They move, but they're staying together.
They move together, yeah.
Okay.
They're together, so they're with that same thirty or thirty-one from, yeah.
Okay. They move teachers.
But if you had to look at a sixth grade or having more kids in another grade, I mean, you know, worst case scenario, I mean. It would be better to have a higher, larger class size in sixth grade than it would be a larger class size in second grade.
I can see that.
So, anything else, Tim?
We have, um, our middle level program this year's gonna be the big deal, all of us being down in West End, so we've got a, a five o'clock meeting on Wednesday at thirteen. Uh, we're meeting teacher night for all sixth, seventh, and eighth big parents, we're gonna let everyone else and invite everyone. We're gonna talk about, talk about all the changes, like the busing and back. The big piece is, we really need to emphasize to parents they cannot pick up and drop off and back, because if they start getting in the way of buses, it's really gonna make it difficult to continue to do that. And you wanna drop, drop off and pick up and back.
Yes.
So we're just gonna go over some of these things, we're gonna bring breakfast up to the sixth through eighth grade kids into the old study hall, so they'll be standing there. And there are gonna be lots of little pieces that we're gonna have to figure out, and we've got as many things figured out as we can, but there are gonna be some things that don't work right on the first day, and we're gonna work through those. We're still kind of fine tuning how kids are gonna get from down there to shop class and home that class and fight yet. And a lot of those kids are the eighth graders, so we're hopeful that if we keep them down at the doors and the bell rings, they can walk on their own. I mean, they've been out the hallway for the last two years, so it isn't like we, we haven't lost any.
Right.
They can do it, but we'll just have to really emphasize to them, you know, to keep that freedom, we, we need them to be quiet, so we're gonna work on that. So we've got that orientation, like, that'll be updated thing. Um, Missy mentioned that our in-service, we have that Tim Bearden, and we have two, two trainings, we're, we're gonna use Fastbridge this year, they're using in the elementary. We're gonna use it at the high school for our Q-Cop goal next year, but we're gonna need a baseline score this year in math and reading, so we're gonna be implementing Fastbridge for that. Continue to use it for our SEL, uh, cell screening and then the teacher screening. And then we're all gonna have naloxone, that nasal spray for emergency treatment of opioid overdose.
Right.
All staff are gonna get that training, teachers, and then we're gonna try to get recorded for all staff, and that's gonna take place on that Wednesday at noon. And then I'll meet the teacher night, and then Mitch, I've talked about homecoming, and we've got the parade permits, we are gonna have parade again this year on the twenty-second. And they're handling all the other activities, but the parade, that piece is done, so now we just need to organize a few things. That's all I have.
Sounds good.
So each class, is each, each class doing a float then, or?
I will try and figure something out.
Yeah.
In the past, we've done that, where classes have done that, and then the elementary, most of the elementary walks from the parade, there are many spectators from the elementary. So a lot of those kids will walk, and then we'll do as many floats as we can.
Good.
Something new this year for floats wise, in the past, just last year, we've had a float like the, was it the eighth or ninth graders, they made a float and only two people rode it. And so what we're doing this year is we're gonna have signup posters, so if you sign up to be on your float, and then if there isn't enough kids, say you only have two on one grade, two on the other, we actually, I think we're gonna combine floats. So say like, eighth and ninth grade, they only have two people per float, we would combine the floats, so that way, we wouldn't have two trailers with nobody on it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Good.
And then a little bit, I'll have more details.
Okay.
If you have any questions, you can always call.
And we'll have two and a half weeks, which is good, so we'll have a little bit of time to plan, you know, one year, we had homecoming like first Friday.
It's not a long time. Too early.
Yeah. Okay, Kevin?
I was just gonna, I'll start off, if the board's interested in having a float or something, a good problem, I'm just throwing it out, if anyone has an idea, we could, they would take a.
It would be fun.
Well, I'm just figuring whether it's riding in a bus and putting something on, or, I mean, there's some easier ways, but anyway, um, just throwing it out there.
Twenty-second?
Yes.
Yeah, yellow and paper?
Yeah.
No, I'm just throwing something out.
Competition, we'll make a pride.
There used to be competition between the grades, floats and skits.
Okay, yeah, skits, that's hard to get.
Oh my god, we had a whole class out there. We did too.
Yeah.
Okay, throwing a few things out just to, um, hopefully inform, um, I don't know how many of you subscribe to, uh, the high school league, but recently they sent out kind of a, um. Well, of course, we have to pay these, um, in the past, recent past, it was a hundred dollars per school, a hundred and sixty dollars per activity, that this was what we pay as a school. And then two twenty-five per student, two dollars and twenty-five cents, that's what they come up. After COVID here, things have come back to normal, if you recall, we had, the fees were up during COVID, cause they didn't have, um, act, or didn't have tournaments, and that's their major funding. For twenty-three, twenty-four in the foreseeable future, still a hundred dollars per school, from one sixty, they dropped it to seventy-five per activity, and nothing per student.
Wow.
Things have come back very strong, but what happened, I don't know if you remember, they were very short, I mean, instantly, so. They built up in, in a matter of a year or two years, they'll come up, they feel that they can support this long term, so.
Good.
Just, that's not gonna save our, anything, but.
Can you say again what that was, if we, yes, if any of us subscribed to it?
Well, you, different people can subscribe to, you know, like MREA, MSBA, you know, and get updates, I'm sure the high school league are thinking, has something you can, you know.
Can you see if there is and you can share it?
I can say, I just.
Okay, cause I dial in for the MREA, but I'd never heard of the high school.
Does that get into state's under?
No, I don't, I, well, I don't think so, see, they, they.
Did you get it all from schools?
They, either from schools, but they make the majority from either sponsorship, like on tournaments, they make money, and then what they make, you know, for instance, they make money on the state hockey tournament, the state basketball, you know, all these tournaments.
Yeah, when you sell out the Excel Center.
So, but what happened is, and I'm just gonna be honest, hit COVID where none of those happened for a bunch of year, and they were in toilets instead of. So, they upped fees and schools, in fact, a couple, I think boycotted, but then, you know, so anyway, just updating you, that's good news. Um, city liaison officer contract, I am meeting on Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday, Wednesday morning, to continue a conversation, I met with Betty once. She wanted to bring Mike in, which he needed to be part of the conversation, nothing, I will bring something back at some point, whether it's no contract, whether it's an updated contract, whatever.
Well, that's why I wanted it, to talk about it, was is it even worth spending the time since we've said no liaison officer?
Well, again, it, it, I'm gonna have a conversation, we'll see what.
Yeah, I think it's worth spending time.
Well, and, and like you say, see, see what their thoughts are, cause we do have them come to events, you know? Um, again, if there's an emergency, they may not, but they go to football game documents, um, and we'll see what comes.
Right, they do offer a number of things.
And they help, and again, I'm not saying they wouldn't, with the parade, you know, things like that, that should we have to pay for, you don't know, you know, um, and again.
There's a give and take.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there, and I, I don't have an answer, you know, like, when we had our bomb threat and stuff, we've never gotten a bill, I don't know if you should or shouldn't. I'm just throwing it out there, you know, at, you know, fire department, you do get a bill at some point if you have an event possibly, you know, so. I wanna have some conversations, learn what's mother, and like I say, we'll come back and have a conversation. Saint Thomas students, it came up, in the past, they play rec, my assumption is we still, because they are tax paying, and we, we would accept, I mean, and I'm just throwing it out there. I wanna make sure there's a head nod, because you could say, we either come here and pay to play, cause we lose money to reach one of those kids. But I'm, well, I'm just throwing it out, right now the stand says they're gonna play elementary, we're gonna run through community ed, cause that's what has to happen. But I just throw it out there, you know, that.
And they pretty much all come here anyways.
Most of them, but like I say, they're trying to expand to seventh and eighth grade as well, you know, and there's conversations. So, again, I'm just telling you where we're at, that's where we're going, we're not doing anything, people have different feelings as time goes on, we can look at it. Uh, update on preschool, just, again, just throwing it out there, we have thirty-three families in the rears right now.
Okay.
But again, we do monthly, um, billing, some are going to collection, and it's, it continues to be a struggle, and I'll be.
Is it higher?
It's, it's just ongoing, but what's happened, and, and we do have some that if they are in the rears, they did not get their first choice, they're, we're not, not allowing the kid to go, but they're getting what's left over. And I'm just telling the board, the ones that we think are paying or are paying, they're gonna get the first choice. Student exchange and visitor program called SEVIS, we have our first enrolling, and I'm just throwing this out there, cause you're gonna hear, it's, it's an exchange program, legal exchange, you know, like a foreign exchange student. Where families can apply, we had two apply, three years ago, three, four years.
For them to come here?
To come here, okay.
From where?
Just, just hang on.
Oh, sorry.
The two that applied, and again, um, the person that, that came, I'm not gonna use the name, cause it doesn't matter, wanted, we have to get certified, and we did, you know, and there's a lot of. You know, and there's a lot of schools throughout the state that are, um, certified, colleges and high schools, those, they applied with two different kids, and they never cleared the process, they're never, you know, I don't know what happened, but somewhere you have to meet with government, get an ESA and all that, and it never worked out. We have a kid from Canada that applied, they have to pay the seven thousand, just hear me out, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, they pay for our tuition, they are approved, they have a one-year opportunity to come and go to school, it's legal through the.
From, from far, far away?
So I'm just throwing it out there.
Is it France?
Or France's, they have one year, it's, even in the high school league, the high school league addresses it, it's a one-year opportunity. Because what, I'm sure what's happened is, how do you say, and can, most time it wouldn't be ordered, then you couldn't go, you know, from Canada and maybe attend California. But I mean, my gut is it's meant to be, but again, I just pointed out because they have a right, they've been approved.
Are they living with someone over here?
They don't have to, because they, they have an ESA or whatever they need to go back and forth, but again, it's very clear, Tim's already, you know, spoke with high school leagues on, it's one year. Now, the kicker, and I'm just being honest with you, if they go to a private school, they could go four years, and I don't have an answer to that of why that is. And there's private schools that have high school, the high school still limits it to one year, so this is not a first time.
Why is it that they don't have to live here? I don't understand, just 'cause they have a visa?
Because actually, if you go in the, um, they have to get what's called nine-twenty, um, and actually, in there, you're order, whatever, again, they had to go meet with customs and this and that, they don't need where I, yeah, I'm just throwing it out there, but I just want you aware.
What grade are they in?
They're eleventh graders, so they have two years of education, the family's choosing, again, I'm just being honest, they, and I think they do have an educational foot, so to speak, because that was their first thing, and, and again, um, do they play some sports, they do, but they only got one year, you know, and so, again.
Never heard of it.
I don't think, I'm just throwing it out there though, well, I have, because again, this was a foreign family, trying to bring a relative over, and it was a one-year deal, and they just didn't clear, and they tried another kid, and it didn't clear. So I'm aware, and like I said, we had to do some paperwork, we have our first, First Nations kid coming, okay, again, they have a right to come, they are, I think, a tenth grader, they are not eligible to play varsity, just like any other transfer, I'm just throwing it out there, so everyone's in the loop. So, assuming they continue to come, they will play JV for a year, and if they stay, then they are eligible, just like anyone else.
And what grade is that one?
I think tenth.
Oh, so a tenth.
See, if they would've came, I'm just throwing it out there, if they would've started here as a ninth grader, they would've been eligible, you know, and again, I'm just throwing it out there, um.
Since, since they have dual citizenship, how does that work?
You mean First Nation?
Right. Well, or they're considered First Nation in Canada, but.
No, and I, I'm not gonna use dual citizenship, but what happens is, the high school league still looks at it, it's where you start your ninth grade year. If, if, if they would've started their ninth grade year here, just like any other kid, if a kid came from, and I'm gonna say Little Fork, ninth grade, they're eligible. If a kid came as a tenth grader from Little Fork, they're not eligible for varsity, unless there was a true move, and the family all moved, and it was due to occupation, or, you know, there's some reasons. Two reminders, um, local five-ten, the negotiations, we have tomorrow at ten AM, and the following day at eleven AM. And then forty-seven ninety-eight, we're also on, we'll talk more behind the scenes here for a few minutes, I don't have a lot, but, um, we're meeting Thursday, so. And the last thing I have, is there has been some conversation, and I don't know where to go, about some sixth graders now, hear me out here, and Tim's trying to get some answers, sixth graders aren't varsity, okay? It can't be for high school league events, but there's some places doing, like with cross country, what they call fun runs, or doing junior high runs, six, seven, and eight, you know, separate, which you can do. The question is, it hasn't come up with us in the past, because we want sixth graders going to, I'm gonna say, ten, twelve, thirteen, you know, they haven't done that in the past, we've had a junior high, but there's been more places that are saying, hey, send them, send them. And so Tim and I, and the Ringhofer, have had some conversation on, well, I don't know, I don't want to say.
What did you say, ten, twelve, thirteen?
Meets.
Meets.
I, I forget, they don't have twenty-three, like, or twenty-four, like basketball or hockey, you, you know, but they do, majority, there's only one home, the rest are all out of town, where, you know, football, four home, four away, you know. The question is, we've never, and again, rec is taken care of, you know, for the most, are we open? I'm not worried about them getting on the bus, for the most part, because sixth graders, fifth graders, third graders, right on the school bus, back and forth, but on the other hand, I guess, I have a little mixed feeling, I don't know how many times, because is it gonna go to basketball? Is it gonna go, you know, where does this go eventually, and again, not asking for an answer, it's just something to think about, and Tim's still working with the high school league, 'cause the high school league is very adamant, do not mix kids, because sixth graders are not high school. And so he's trying to get as much information, but like they say.
So who's asking?
Different, well, cross country's the one that's asking, because there's more places that are running either, you know, a sixth grade separate run, but doing it just kind of like swimming, like at our home league, often does a junior, or a elementary fun swim or whatever.
For just the kids.
Just for the others, let up, let the home ones do it, most of the schools don't bring kids.
Right.
Well, now, there's more and more schools starting to send kids.
But then they miss so many hours of school.
Well, they miss more school, you know, it's a.
And they're old later, and they're eleven and twelve years old, that's why.
Correct.
It's pretty, the coach has to be coaching.
But again, there's a, there's a junior, well, whatever, so.
But that's up to the parents too.
That, yeah.
So anyway, I'm just throwing it out there that that's, there's some conversation, I don't know where it's going, we're still working on it, where to come, if you will, and I think that's all I have.
Okay, do you have anything from Beth?
Yep, yep, she, she has, uh, she was actually meeting with the city and reporting on some things, so I said I would, um, give you her update. Youth classes, they, they ran pickleball every Thursday throughout the summer, uh, drivers' training, group swimming lessons, private swimming lessons, um, pals over the summer has done some outdoor games and lemonade. Uh, picnic at Voyager's National Park, uh, nine-to-five musical down in Grand Rapids, uh, a major shopping trip, excuse me, involve youth workouts. She'll be attending community ed one-on-one education, um, throughout this week or later on this week, it's in the Elevate Seminar, um, in training. Uh, the back-to-school mailer went out today, that's in the mail, um, they participated in the National Night Out. Upcoming, they have water, fitness classes, drivers' training, defensive driving, intro to trap shooting, and Taekwondo, and then starting in October, they're hoping to operate youth classes one Wednesday a month. Um, they're gonna also participate in this block party at Kutaska, um, she has Saturday, September sixteenth. The next community ed advisory meeting will be September twelfth at eleven AM, and that's what she made.
Was there any firearm safety?
She doesn't have it listed, I.
'Cause I'm gonna question that, because they have that trap event in October, but you can't participate unless you have your firearm safety.
I don't have an answer, maybe, you know, that.
Give her a call.
Do you want me to mention something, or do you want?
I did ask her about it, but hadn't heard, yeah.
Uh, Tim, Ringhofer?
He doesn't, he was just gonna be here, and, and for the most part, um, he, he will get me in a report, but he said he was gonna be here, so I said, well, you don't have to, you can answer questions on the hammer. Activities are up and running, um, I think volleyball had a scrimmage, was that right?
Today?
Today?
Today and Saturday.
And so things are.
First game Thursday. Okay, committee reports, community ed advisory, I, I always feel weird, like, we just got done talking about what Beth said, and then the community.
I know, I feel like that can just come off.
You wanna come off, and it can be part of her, if there is anything, okay, yep, 'cause there's no longer rec.
I have a question, with the cadence that we do, and maybe there's no way, because, like, now we have all these questions, community ed left, Tim left, like, can you do those first, in front of your board meeting? Because otherwise, these people have to sit through our whole board meeting, and then they're gone, and we have questions for them.
You can do, for the most part, any order that you so desire and want, you know, I mean, obviously, you want open forum somewhere up top.
Right, but I say like open forum, and the, the community ed and all that stuff, if we did that first, and Tim, like, the, you know, the individual people.
I wouldn't mind that.
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Okey dokey.
Can I leave him?
Nice try.
That definitely do.
You're probably thinking that too, but, Ben's like, yeah, come on.
I think it might help you, because then you won't have to repeat things.
That, well, that's my thought, and then they're here to answer them, and you don't have to go trace them down and say, hey, I had a follow-up.
Okay, and now we're gonna go into closed session.
We technically need a motion in a second.
Could I have a motion to close a meeting, or to?
We'll make a motion, a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're closed for labor.